Turner County Commissioners Meeting, Tuesday, November 28th. Here's your agenda. Sorry, had to let somebody get by. Here's your agenda.
Good to see you.
Clifford Jordan is here for the update on rec. You haven't seen the fire chief yet?
I'll just take it out of my page.
They are having a call meeting to possibly vote on some of these items. Hazmat plan has been approved by the cities. Holiday pay, qualifying fees for the 2024 election. And there you go. We will not cover the closed session as it is closed to the public and we're not allowed in. Won't know what goes on unless they come out and tell us, which has so far never happened, at least on the record. And if they do take any action though, it does have to be done in open session and the reason for that action given.
With us, Megan?
Megan. Megan says she would be glad to explain if she could come tonight. But that's what, they merged together, so. She said they, they're all the boys. But it did, they merged from all that.
Yeah, but then he Saturday passed away.
Same deal.
Then he Saturday passed away.
That's what happened.
He just went down, yeah.
He was owner of it.
Well, he was the general manager and after he was gone, it just, it just couldn't keep up.
Is that in your way? County Clerk. Mary Lee Green just walked in with her husband, Lester. Not sure who the lady is, it's Sheriff Andy Heston, one of his deputies. Ronnie Waters, Chief Deputy, Dustin Beatty, Jan Winter, Cliff Jordan. Councilor Commissioner's Table, Alan Weaver, Dana Whitten, Larry Calhoun, Joe Verdis, Nick Denham, and the county attorney Brett. Hi.
What is that on your head, Ben?
My brains.
Your brains? Think you got a size too big, dude.
You can turn it back down now, at least the chill side of the air.
All right, it is six o'clock, we've called a meeting order. Mr. Baker, will you go off for your indication?
Lord, we just thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for the blessings you've given us. We thank you for the things kept away from us. They're all good in your sight and we are just thankful for them. We ask continually to bless our farmers, give them what they need to grow the crops that we need. We ask you to watch over those in public safety, no matter their role, keep them safe, keep them from harm, and bring them home at their end of shift or they have families to. And Lord, as this board meets tonight, we pray that you grant them the wisdom to make the right decisions in your sight so you'll be proud of this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
I stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, Ford, get a motion to adopt the agenda. A motion to second to adopt the agenda. No discussion, all in favor? All right, we have public comments concerning agenda items tonight. All right, at this time, I can get a motion to go into a public hearing for hazard mitigation. A motion to second to go into a public hearing, is any discussion? Not all in favor? We will consider ourselves into a public hearing. Would you like to update us while we're in before we get started on?
You say we start right here?
Yes, whatever you want to do.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Rhonda Hilton from the Southern Georgia Regional Commission of Valdosta. We have been working now for a little over a year on your update to your hazard mitigation plan for Turner County and other cities. We've had our workshops, FEMA and GMA. Especially FEMA has, they came out with some new rules and regulations that we had to adhere to. And your plan is the first one that I've done since these new regulations were put into place. One of the things, we had to make sure that we reached a vulnerable population, which is your farm workers, your homeless people, and another, or some that we just can't reach. But one of the new requirements is, we had to come up with, we had to come up with a brochure and you can take one and pass them down, and we have them in English and Spanish because a lot of your farm workers are Hispanic, of the Hispanic population. So we want to make sure that we've reached the vulnerable people. So in times of a hazard, which you have thunderstorms, hail, wind, hurricanes, tornadoes, cold weather, extreme heat, et cetera, floods. And we want to make sure that they are aware of what they can do during a time of a hazard. And I'm not quite sure how often you have hazards, but you do have them. You have them more than what NOAA reports on. But this is just one of the things that we had to do, is a brochure, and we placed them in the libraries and health department, defense, cities, and the county had them. But, and another thing we had to do is regardless of how people feel about climate change, we had to address the climate change and how it will affect your hazards. We all know that the summers are getting hotter, winter, we don't quite have winters like we used to. Once in a while, we'll have a hard freeze that just like we're about to have, that pops up out of nowhere. Sometimes it's late spring and we just have to make sure that we reach everyone and everyone knows what to do during the time of a hazard. And in this plan, you have action steps, you have your goals, how you want to address each one of your hazards. And we have action steps, we went through the action steps and updated the ones that have been completed. We added a couple of new ones. We addressed the pandemic. And so you have action steps in there and you have goals, how you want, the action steps are how you want to take care of the needs as they arise. And so you, the items that are listed in your plan, once this is adopted, you can apply for grants, just like grants for sirens, police radios, cameras, anything that you need that's in this plan that you can use for hazard mitigation, warning signs. There's all kinds of grants that you can apply for and you place those items in your plan and then you can apply for these along the line. Now, regardless of whether you have a plan or not, when you do have a hazard, FEMA and GMA's will step in and they're going to take care of your needs at that time. But anything that's in this plan, you can, throughout the next five years, you can apply for grants for assistance. It is updated every five years. It has been reviewed by GMA, they approved it, it's been sent off to FEMA and I think tonight they're going to pass a resolution, hopefully to adopt it. And once, they want it adopted before FEMA gives their final say so. Normally, we don't have a lot to come back from FEMA because Seminole County was the first one in Georgia that had put the new regulations in and we kind of followed what they had to do, working with GMA. So if anything has to be changed that's major, you know, just come back for an amended adoption, but normally we don't have to do that, but in case, we just come back just like I'm doing tonight. But FEMA wants it adopted before they give their final say so, which is kind of backwards to me, but that's just the way, we all know that's how they operate. But I'm here if you have any questions.
And this has been going on for a while, I'm both from our department heads and then meeting with you. I think I only went to one meeting unfortunately. And CD, several of the police chiefs I know have been involved in, Sicklemore and Rebecca.
Yes.
And Ashburn have all had people involved in it.
Had it, but I think Sicklemore, I'm not sure if they have adopted it yet. I know at their first meeting, they were a little bit confused about it. Normally, we don't go to the cities' meetings. Usually the person that was at the meetings takes care of it, but the police chief came, I think, to the kickoff, but they were made aware of every workshop, the notice went out to the clerk. And for some reason, they felt like they didn't have anything to do with it, but sometimes that happens with the smaller communities. But they are supposed to, Mark went and talked with them, met with them and talked with them and as far as I know, they're going to adopt it. We really don't have to have the cities to adopt it, but we like to get them to because it's really the county plan. It's a county plan, but it includes the cities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all got it all worked out, yeah? It's something we have to do. I don't know, I don't know if I need to hear, put the comments in favor of the plan? Anyone got any comments in favor?
Well, I think just a little bit that I've looked over, she's covered all the bases. Been in a couple of meetings and it's what we do every five years and it looks really good. I would urge the commission to definitely go forward with it.
Are there any comments disapproving the mitigation plan? All right. If there are no other comments, y'all have any comments?
Okay.
If not, we'll get a motion to go out of public hearing, back into regular session. Motion to second to go out of public hearing into regular session. If there's no discussion, all in favor? The Southern Department here reports, Mr. Jordan, recreation update.
Good evening. Not a lot to say tonight. We're just finished with our football season. Really proud of the kids. Eight U finished up fifth in the state, 10 U finished up third in the state. So really proud of those kids, we come a long way from last year. Lot of sponsors coming up. We're getting ready for our first senior ball. We're still working to find a venue for that. Other than that, that's, we're just rock and rolling, getting ready for basketball season.
What's senior ball, what do you mean?
We're going to do a senior ball, sixty and over. We're going to do a senior dance.
A senior?
Right, not a senior bowl, a senior ball, I'm sorry. So we're going to have a senior dance, so we're just trying to find a venue for that. Trying to get more involved with the elderly, besides being, go, kind of getting out of the house to get some food for a change. Other than that, that's all we got. Any questions for me?
Y'all got any questions? Thank you, sir. And firing him may, Mr. Robinson has got COVID. Whether I'm going to say that public or not, I don't know. But he's sick anyway, so he's not here. The, uh, new business, consider adopting resolution 2023-12-01, a resolution Attorney County Commission to pursue it to the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, authorize an adoption of Attorney County Hazard Mitigation Plan and authorize the chairman to sign a resolution on behalf of the county. And a motion to second to adopt resolution 2023-12-01. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor? All right, we got that. The, under general discussion tonight, we have discussed holiday pay for employees. The, we had, in the past, we've always, you know, give holiday pay out. This year, we didn't know if we was, we did get some money coming in, we think we could do some. We had discussed $300, but I will open that up to the table. Go ahead.
The sheriff has so graciously offered to pay 50,000 towards the Christmas bonus he got at the jail fund. And I'd like to ask the question that we pay, that we give a thousand dollars per full-time personnel and 500 for the part-time.
Thousand, full-time and 500 for the part-time. And the sheriff was so graciously to give half of that, basically, or piece of that, out of jail fund money. Of course, we would use jail fund money only to operate the jail and then we will offset it with our other.
You can place hours with it.
Of the. You can take it down to salaries, if you have to. Of that. Place it with the jail. And then, you're right, that's what, we'll do it, however legally, I'll put that in form, okay?
Do we have some discussion?
Yes.
I put a week's pay, what our week's pay, in my budget for my employees.
Well, a thousand, probably going to be more than a week's pay, won't it? But, I mean, it's going to be.
Okay.
Going to be whole.
Yeah. We're paying some people too much, I don't know.
We're taking a little money.
You're going to take that and take this.
The, is there any other discussion on that?
So what's the total cost?
I'm going to do a guess, information that'd be a hundred, hundred thousand dollars.
I'm trying to get a cover. It leaves me in the middle.
Yeah, no, I know, but I mean, you had the total at 300, what was the total at 300?
Uh, 39,613.
So it was 39,613. That is, it's going to.
That was it.
Hundred eight, hundred eight, hundred.
What do you?
It's over a hundred thousand.
It's over a hundred thousand.
So that's more than we were expecting to be able to pay with insurance, craniand tax.
Thirty thousand was going to come back.
So we would have to find another 20-ish thousand or more, another, it's 110, another 30,000.
I guess we'll find it somewhere, like we always.
Well, but we have, we have $250,000 that we spent that was tied to a tax increase that we thankfully didn't do, but we spent. So I'm concerned we have that. And I, I don't think our employees should suffer because we haven't made good budgeting decisions as a board, because that's just my feeling, that we should have put that money in our budget to begin with so that we had it available to take care of our employees instead of trying to chase finding this money. But I don't think our employees should suffer because of that.
They won't if we give them bonus.
I'm just saying, that's our choice in what we did from a budget perspective. I don't agree with how we got to the budget that we have. I'm agreeing the employee should get something. I just don't like the fact that we have to try to find the money. We should have put the money in our budget to begin with.
All right, we got the 50 of it, our 30 for sure, and if Mary Lee had in her budget, that's going, I don't know how much that would make. So we, we are getting closer to the amount that we're offsetting because of that. So we have a motion in a second, there's no other discussion, all in favor? All opposed, so, favor? unanimous. Listen here, I don't know what we're voting for tonight, y'all, because we're not voting until next week, so that was, that we was practicing. We're practicing nothing, nothing. This is discussion.
Well, it's a call meeting, so we can vote on some of this stuff, correct?
It says call meeting, flash work section.
The, we was doing the call meeting to get the, uh.
It's still a call.
We're not voting on this, we put.
Well, we got to do this.
Is our lawyer got any issues with that? We got that one done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a call meeting, so we're fine.
All right, now.
All we got to do, they need those, they don't have them either.
Well.
That's only makes sense.
The, I was, items two through five, we'll discuss. In case I, is there any legal issues with that?
No.
Or what we've done is done, but on the rest of it.
We have a three, four more items. And why we're going to vote.
Is there an issue with going ahead and voting on it because it is a call meeting?
No.
So we could go ahead and handle it all?
I think we just need to state the motion for the first one for the record so that she knows what the actual motion was.
The motion, the motion on the first one, I'm going to do the best I can. The, it's a thousand dollars per full-time employee and 500 dollars for the part-time employees. Whatever, probably gets somebody that works one hour a year, he may not consider that personal part-time. Whatever the department has considered. Consider part-time employees. The, and the sheriff said he was going to pull 50,000, we could pull 50,000 from jail fund, which I'll say.
We've already voted on what I'm talking about.
We just wanted the motion in the record. Because we didn't state a motion, we just.
I didn't state, I didn't restate it, that was me. That was on me. I know, I know. I know one more one, David. Maybe I forget any more of that. Item two, discuss setting qualifying fees for 2024.
Legal aid.
Well, it ain't, it's the, Ms. Jan.
Yes.
Could you have that information?
It must be published in the legal organ prior to, or January 31st. So to get it in the paper, it needs voted on next week is fine.
Do you have the numbers?
No, Latrice will work on it. It's 3% of the base pay. Now, for the clerk of superior court, judge of probate court, the sheriff, the tax commissioner, and the magistrate is based on their base salary, not with all the extra add-ons, okay? Anybody else that is an elected official, it would be 3% of their salary. So theirs is not locked. In other words, if they get a raise, then theirs would go up. But we have not gotten together to come up with the number. But that's the reason it needs voted on now, because it needs run in the paper.
Okay.
So next week is fine, Latrice and I will come up with number three.
That would have always been, hadn't it?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, and it changed, but this year's number shouldn't, they're going, I think the constitution's over getting a $2,000.
That doesn't affect this. The constitutional.
So it's still just base.
No, in other words, if the commissioner's got a raise, then it would go up.
It's still be same what it was last year.
Okay, so basically, we're not, all we got to do is approve the same number from last year.
Yeah.
You got school board number?
No, no, we've got three up this year. We did two, two years ago.
You know what their part-time figure is? I mean, I have totals for everybody else.
No, because I don't know what their salary is.
Theirs hasn't changed either, has it?
I don't know. Latrice and I will address it before.
We're trying to vote on.
I'm sorry, sir. I don't have payroll numbers or what their salaries are.
I have everybody else's total right here, if you want. But I don't have the board of education.
I don't know.
It is 3%.
But I don't remember.
When does this actually begun?
The seventh.
It must be in the paper before the end of January, so ideally, the next meeting is fine.
When is that? We're not having another meeting until January.
End of January.
End of January? Okay, do it, we can do it January 1st, it's good.
Yes, if you're going to meet January 1st.
If y'all two can have the numbers by.
That's fine.
First meeting in January, that will.
We will do it, thank you.
All right, is any other discussion on that? The, discuss bids for loan maintenance contract. And we opened the bids, Dustin, I'll let you jump on that.
Well, we opened the bids at 2:00 o'clock yesterday. All right, that was when they just had to turn them in. We had a bid opening at 2:30. Only three bids was turned in. It would be Vale Loan Service, Chapman's Loan Care, and Above and Beyond Loan Care. All three met the requirements, but Vale, the only requirement he did not meet is, he didn't have workers comp insurance yet. That, he didn't, he don't have any. The other two does. So Chapman and Above and Beyond, they meet all requirements for it. But Vale, he came in with a bid at 52,500. Chapman came in with 59,814. And Above and Beyond Loan Care came out with 61,950.
Chapman was 64.
Last year, he went down on his.
So I'm glad we remitted, save money here, June. The, you got met expectations, yes, on Vale, but you're telling me that.
Yes, so that, we found out today that he didn't have workers comp, it wasn't on his insurance paper. He's got liability insurance, he just ain't got the workers comp.
Well, what wrong with him getting it?
Well, I think he can get it.
Yeah, he did it.
All we got to do is just add it, add it to it.
Just, that can be part of the.
I thought it was somebody that we know we've been getting good service from.
I don't know why y'all come up with that all the time.
Well, I just, I just got a ton of positive comments on him.
They don't know nothing about who Joe Verdis is or whatsoever. And I go there and do good jobs and others don't do so. I don't know why y'all, and it's going to be there.
You seeing y'all? I got a motion for Vale. I have a motion and a second for Vale Loan Service at 52,500, as long as they can get workers comp insurance. And if they can't, then just come back before us again. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ready to? The, the. Item number four is discuss wine and liquor sales for Ashburn Golf RV LLC. Rodney, want to say anything?
No, really, I mean, if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is this for pouring glasses or?
Yes.
Or just by the bottle?
Pouring glass, serving.
We don't, we don't have a pouring, pour drinks in the county.
Oh, we don't?
All we have is by the bottle.
Well, they, they're.
The CD does, the CD does, but the county don't.
We're going to do a, we're going to do a restaurant, it's going to be associated with a restaurant, does that matter?
I don't think it matters unless we, I mean, we, we'll have to, uh, soon be a referendum and then, uh, put it on the ballot and it, you know, just like vote on, vote on the, by the bottle, or that vote on by the drink.
Well, they, they were going to do like margaritas and stuff like that.
That don't matter to me.
Yeah, it's, it's liquor.
I ain't trying to keep forgetting.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that.
Oh, I thought it was just beer, this ain't the beer.
No, it's, we've already got a beer, last, we're trying to get the wine and liquor.
If you want to open up a liquor store out there, that's.
No, 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 I do not. I ain't really, I really.
All the bigs going to run.
It's in the city, I can do that.
Yeah, in the city.
I thought they've been doing. City in the county.
In the, in the side of the city limits, they have a referendum and they voted to do liquor by the drink. I believe, as long as you have 50% food, is that right?
Yes.
As long as they, they can't just have a bar, I reckon, it's got to be food. And, but we don't, I don't know that we have that.
It wasn't on the referendum before the vote. They ain't been, they ain't been doing that out there?
Don't ask that question.
No, I can assure you, I'm the manager and I promise you, it ain't been done out there. In the past, yes.
In the past, it's been.
But for the last six years, I've seen.
The past, you was doing, so, uh, that was. That was, I ain't got nothing to do with TV, I know it been going on.
I'm telling you, the troops are leaving or not.
I'm telling the crew, I know it used to be on out there, so, I mean, that's why I was asking, I know I look. I know it used to go on out there, so, I mean, that's why I was asking, I know, I know it used to do it, so.
Not supposed to do.
Well, I know it didn't not supposed to do it, but.
We want to be totally legal, if, if it's not legal for us to do that, we have no problem not doing it.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
But we'd like to do it in, in association with a restaurant if possible.
As far as I know, it's not legal in turn.
Well, can, how, how do I, we'll about get it on a, a ballot to be voted on?
We have, we just have to.
Can I request that?
I ain't got no problem with it, I don't.
I don't have no problem with it either.
It's a process.
I don't have no problem with it, open, I don't, you got to have three to do it, so.
Jan, could it be on this ballot coming up?
I don't know, I'll have to check into it and I'll get back to you. There's specific when referendums can be added, and I don't know if the presidential preference qualifies or if it would have to be in May on the primary. But I will check, because there's certain dates, and even number of years you can do it, and odd number of years, there's different dates that you can use. So I will check on it and get back to you.
You will check.
You got my vote in to do it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll get back to you and let you know tomorrow.
I'm probably going to vote against it, but I still like.
You got to run, ninja.
If I was a voter, I'd, I'd vote against it too.
You got to run, ninja, that's on me.
I see, I see involved Andy a lot when I start doing this. That's just my feelings, though.
Moving right along. So, I, uh, I, I think we just got to table the number four. Y'all got, y'all good with the table?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number five, discuss grant updates with Sheriff Andy Hester, Sheriff.
Yeah, all right, so I'm going to be real quick, or I can be long, whatever y'all want, if you want to get in the weeds. Um, so what I'm requesting is a doctor, Anice Mayberry Foundation, uh, is wanting to do a host site, she's done it for other sheriff offices, police departments, for a grant. Uh, it's for distant learning technology grant. Um, myself and the Bayonne County Sheriff both have talked to her and, and want to do the grant. It's a fifteen percent max grant, but her foundation is willing to pay the fifteen percent match, so it's not going to cost the taxpayers, attorney candy, anything. It could be up to three hundred thousand dollar grant split between myself and the Bayonne County Sheriff, or if another sheriff's office gets into this thing between three. Um, so we already have been working with her on, she does a truckload, uh, thing for community policing with Chris County Sheriff's Office, Tib County. Sheriff's Office and us, we've been doing it, uh, so everything is returned to Walmart, they'll put it on pallets and we go pick it up. And sometimes we pick up both Walmarts and we get, we can donate that for community, for needy families, for if they're disaster and things like that. We have already donated things to some of the churches. Um, some of it's not any good, I mean, it returns, some of it is, so we go do it and see what is and what's not. And, uh, she's wanting to expand that, I think Billy has got a couple semi truckloads of stuff from Amazon and stuff like that. And give stuff out for torches for tots during Christmas and things of that nature, bicycles and others, so. I need a, I need, uh, your blessing on the grant, it has to be unanimous, uh, vote from the commissioners in order for me to give her the go-ahead. I have to give her a, a copy of the minutes where y'all voted that I could do the grant. The other thing is, is that I would like to expand our county to be one of the sites, uh, that the truck, that they bring semi load of stuff to, instead of us going to pick up pallets from Walmart, which we would still do. But if it's a Amazon truck or a, it could be any company that has returns, uh, for community oriented policing, she's worked out deals with them for the, her to get that product and to pass it on to us, so we can pass it on. I also have to have y'all's blessing for our county to be included in that, so the truck will come here. I had to have a thousand, uh, square foot, uh, area to store that, we are looking right now to try to see if we can find a place. I do have enough room in our training room and in that building outside that we put our boat and stuff in that we can clean out and use. Um, if we can move this stuff in and move it out quick enough, if not, I'm going to talk to some of the, uh, business owners and see if they got a warehouse or something that we can use, it's not being used to do that in. And so I have to have y'all's blessing for them to do that also, for our site to be included as a delivery site for the semi. We can continue to go to Walmart and pick up the pallets, because it's, sometimes it's not a pallet load, sometimes it's a couple pallets. So I can expand further if I need to.
It's a good thing, right?
It is a good thing, it's helped us with community oriented policing, um, we're trying to get in that, and the distant learning, it's, uh, that we can get technology to put in our training room that our, um. What she talked to me today about is that she's going to come and sit down with me and maybe talk about helping doing some distant learning for people living in our community that don't have a high school diploma. Which we already have programs to do that, but she's, she's got resources to help with that also, and wants me to kind of spearhead something in our community to do that too. And that grant would help get the equipment to do that inside our training room, so, and it would benefit us too, we can do, uh, our training in there and expand our training and stuff like that, so.
Ain't no cost then.
Don't cost us anything, it's, uh, if it does, we can turn it down, but it's fifteen percent match, she's willing to match, she's already done it with, I got a list, if y'all want to see the list at offices, agencies that have done it, how much they got and stuff like that. But I, that's the weeds if you want to get into it, so. I do need a, in order for her to proceed with both, I do need y'all, all, uh, an unanimous, uh, vote, so that I can give her the minutes to show that it's, we'll do it very.
And I'm sure that we support the sheriff's request.
Have a motion as second to support the sheriff's request for a grant.
And a remote site for the.
And a remote site for the semi. For comes turn county. Is any other discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. County manager, chairman to comments, the, uh, one thing I, uh, one thing I have was that the R D C was, well, I've been told, Joe, but the R D C. Does our, South Georgia Regional Commission does our, uh, taxi cab service, I reckon you called it transit, they like the word transit better. The, uh, and we ha- we, uh, we've been partners with South Georgia two, three years ago, I'm not sure when. But they were, they were going with bids, was their service, but there was some. Bids merged with R M S or R D S, another company, and it's just under a different name, it's a different company. Still doing the same, I think they still got the same employees. Uh, but they, she didn't think they'd laid anybody off, but same employees, same, they, nothing's changed on that. Can't think of nothing else.
Yeah, I hear it, it's had been so.
It, that is, it is true, it did get sold or merged, I don't know the exact, but y'all want the exact information, I can get one of their reps to come talk, if y'all good.
I just want to know, I didn't really know nothing about it, so.
All right, do we have any, uh, public comments tonight? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to invite you, we have the Christmas parade coming up on December ninth. Um, if anybody wants to be involved or interested in that, please just give me a holler at the chamber. Um, that is December ninth at ten a.m. The day before that, we're having a turkey shoot down there in Sigmar at the range down there, it's going to be a lot of fun, it's going to be in the evening. And then we have our chamber banquet coming up, January twenty-third, so, um, please mark your calendars and come to that.
What about lighting that, that tea net, I thought we were going to light that tea net up, it's in the works. Thank you. He does need that, but.
Yeah, I understand.
Any other public comments?
I'd like to say.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the sheriff's office and my employees, thank you for the, for the Christmas.
Same.
Same.
Same. Well deserved, y'all work hard. We can get a motion to go into executive session for personnel and real estate.
Again?
Again. Motion. Yeah, motion second, go into executive session for personnel and real estate. Any discussion not in favor? We got our little room back there again? We got a different little room, it's a. Shouldn't need no vote going on, so.
Commissioners and I go to another room to hold a closed session, we'll hang out and see what they do.